Please rise. Oh, you're getting good at it. Good evening and welcome to the July meeting of the Town of Phillips Town Planning Board. Tara, please take the roll.
I'm Kim Maranti.
Here.
Kim Connor. Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
David Hardy. Peter Lewis. Neil Toman.
Here.
Neil's up there.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of minutes from the June 21 meeting? Anybody corrections? Additions, deletions? Move to adopt the July, or June 21 minutes?
No move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll start out. Item number one, J. Mark Jewelers. We have a draft resolution from Ron. Ron, sorry.
What do I say? You've got, you know, since the last meeting, there's been referrals that have been responded to both by Dutchess, or Putnam County Planning and the local fire department. Both came back with satisfactory responses. And so, given that, we've identified, or transmitted to you, draft approval resolutions, one being a negative secret declaration and one being site plan approval. That's for the board's consideration tonight.
Anybody have any questions or comments on J. Mark Jewelers? Anyone? Motion to adopt the draft resolution?
It's secret.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Secret declaration, right.
Anybody move to adopt a secret declaration? Negative?
I'll make that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the draft resolution? Any comments? Motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, Hudson-Hudson Reserve. Steve, would you like to make intro remarks? Steve, any intro remarks on what we do with the scope?
As I'm sure the board recalls, when we left off, we completed the scoping session except for submission of additional written comments. AKRF has prepared a very thorough memo to the board, which goes over all the oral comments and all the written comments that were submitted. And I don't want to speak for AKRF. I mean, Chris can, you know, give you the particulars of it, but in sum and substance, organizes the comments and references where the various issues raised are covered in the draft scope. The consultants have put together, working with the applicant, a slightly modified version of the draft scope, which was before the board during the scoping session. And I'll leave it to Chris to go over the changes. I'm sure everyone's read it. And that modified version is what's before the board for consideration tonight. You can adopt the scope as revised. You can propose changes to the scope if you want to see something else in it or a change in the language. Or if, you know, and I don't see grounds for this personally, but I mean, it's an option, you could reject the scope and say, "We want to see it redrawn in other ways." To do that, you're going to run into time problems because you know you've got a 60-day clock. You'd have to ask probably for more time or call a special meeting.
Was it August 4th, we said?
I believe that was what we decided was the day, yeah. So anyway, those are your options. And it's already with you, Andy, I'll turn it over to Chris to just go over AKRF's memo and kind of discuss the changes to the draft scope. Okay, Chris, please.
Evening all. As Steve had mentioned, we prepared a memo documenting all of the comments that were received during the, prior to the scoping session, written comments prior to the scoping session, verbal comments during the scoping session, the last planning board meeting, and then comments received, written comments received subsequent to the scoping session before the close of the public comment period. 69 comments in total. Those were all organized by topic that, so that they fit into the existing framework of the draft scope that was prepared for your review initially. As you go through the memo, you'll see that each one of the comments, as Steve had mentioned, there's a note which, or annotation which indicates where, within the scope, each one of those comments will be addressed. Some of those comments resulted in changes to the scope itself. Those annotations indicate where those changes were made as well. So that memo itself is sort of a complete review and summary of what was received for comments and where those comments will be addressed or have been addressed. Also included in that package was the revised scope, which I assume you all had a chance to take a look at. That revised scope is our collective assessment of the comments themselves that were received and then the, addressed within that draft scope, or the revised draft scope, how we felt it could be handled. We think that the scope at this point is complete or relatively complete, but if there are comments, as Steve had mentioned, if there are comments that the planning board has, we can certainly talk about those now. If there are changes that are needed, the scope could be revised and it could be adopted with those revisions tonight.
Thank you.
And also with that was the, all the written comments, all the verbal comments, as well as a transcript that was received as backup.
Comments from the board? Neil?
Two comments unrelated. First, I just want to praise ourselves for a moment. I went to Dolly's last night at the Garrison Landing. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to go to the New Guinan's. We don't get a chance to praise the work we do. We spent a lot of time reviewing that application multiple times. It came before us. It's a beautiful space. Did an incredible job. A lot of people came before us, I think three different times, or different applications, different potential vendors to build a restaurant, build a business. And one of our own board members' wife is one of the co-leaders of that property. It is fantastic, and I think it shows the important work this board does in improving this community. A little piece at least we had in, having that happen. So if you haven't been down there, go see it because it's a beautiful thing. Related to this topic, thank you for that non-sequitur, or allowing me, related to this topic, I appreciate the work that you did, Steve, our board did, and the community for helping participate in this draft scope. I realize it's been difficult to get to this point. I do want to direct a comment, speaking for myself, to the applicant, and this tied to the alternatives section. I do want to urge you guys to listen to the voice of the public, myself, and various board members around this table, to the thought that we would like you to consider alternatives related to at least three things. They are the homes ringing the pond, the uniformity and size of the homes and the need for clustering, and finally, the scale and the number of horses in the farm. I state this without prejudice, but I stay to repeat and to bring emphasis to the fact that the public has come out and stated over and over again these points. And this board has stated it in various degrees and individuals in this board for years. That is where the 69, is that the right number, sir? 69 comments have a heavy weighting on those topics. I urge you to consider that as you go through the next phase of this work. Thank you.
Kim?
So I have a bunch of comments. And the first one is just a grammatical thing. Down here at the bottom of the first page, where it says Conservation Subdivision Perculent Section, I think it should be Perculent Two Section. Sorry. Okay. So what I want to just make sure, because a lot of these statements in the scope are kind of concise, I just want to make sure that included in these statements are some of the concerns. So for example, where it says in Section 4B2, Description of Existing and Proposed Access to the Site, does that include the comment from the DOT about Route 9 and, DOT seems to want it to not come in off of Route 9, but instead to use alternative access?
The applicant will have to address that. We have been informed by the applicant that they are, they have provided the information requested by the DOT, and they will work with the DOT to attempt to resolve the comment with regard to access off of Route 9.
Okay, so I guess what I'm just asking is, does it need to have a fuller description there in terms of, you know, does it need? Because when I looked through, so I wasn't here last time, and I apologize for that, but when I looked through the examples of other draft scopes that you'd given us, some of them were extremely detailed. This one is fairly concise. So I just want to make sure that all the things that people were interested in are included in here because these are short descriptors.
And, excuse me, on that one, yes. The description of the existing access, which is the two roads currently that provide access up toward the project site, and the proposed access, which is the new curb cut to Route 9, they would have to describe what those are in that EIS.
So that would include the DOT's concerns?
Correct. And obviously, if the DOT has concerns and it becomes problematic for providing access to that location, there would have to be an additional analysis done to look at how else, or other options to get into that project site.
Okay. So also, having to do with access, there is a proposal to change the zoning in that area. Maybe, I can't remember exactly if it's manufacturing, but there was a proposal for the town to make a change to the zoning to, that's also in that access area. And also, one thing that's been discussed in the past is petitioning the town to relax the road standards within the development for width and narrowness. That was something that was brought up in the last four years.
That hasn't occurred yet, though. The application for zoning changes is in, impending with the town board, waiting, seeking for a review to be done. But I don't think any application's been made in regard to the road standards. Has it?
I believe so.
Has?
Alternate road standards are provided for in the code. I believe that the initial application included that. I have to check.
Have you asked the town board to relax the road standards?
You've asked to apply alternate road standards consistent with the code.
Okay, is that before the town board, or this?
There's a section of the town code for streets that provides for an applicant to apply for alternate road standards. In fact, we're not asking for relief from any of the things Kim mentioned. We're asking for relief from the grade of a connector street at, I think, 8 or 10% to minimize the cut that is required to get up from Route 9.
Okay, is that though before the town board, or is that being made to the planning board?
Be honest, I have to check.
Yeah, I don't remember anything before the town board, but we'll have to look into that, Kim. Will that be covered if there's alternate road standards in the description of proposed action? Will that be covered in this section?
Yes. The applicant will have to talk about whatever requirements are needed or variances associated with their proposed action. So if there's some, as Mr. Watson had mentioned, if there's some need for relaxation of the code with regard to the percent slope on those roads, that will have to be described in the EIS, yes.
Okay.
That will be part of that discussion of what it is that they're asking for.
Okay, good. So in 4C1C, where it says the Equestrian Center, and it says Full Description of Building Configuration, Uses, and Maintenance Operations, does that include such things as staffing, events, visitors, parking, and ownership?
That is the intent. The script, project description, design and layout is to outline and detail all of the requirements that will be needed for the construction and operation of the proposed action.
Okay. Because it says maintenance operation, and I just want to make sure that it isn't just maintenance operations, that it's operations generally.
Do you want to include ownership and staffing, or do you think it's okay as it is?
If that's something the board would want to see, that can be added to this.
I would like to see that.
So the two pieces, Kim, were ownership and?
Well, it's staffing, events, visitors, parking, and ownership.
So the ownership, staffing, events, parking, and visitors?
Yep.
That would go right after maintenance operations?
Right. So 4C, 4C2A, where it says Proposed Impervious Surface Areas, including all roof areas, roads, driveways, garages, and based on the presentation that was given last month, the paddocks are also going to be impervious surfaces.
That would be captured under roof areas?
Correct. But the paddocks are not enclosed with a roof? Okay. So we'll go down to 5A1B, Groundwater Resources. So under groundwater resources, it says groundwater resources will be described using existing relevant studies, such as the Chazen Report on Phillips Town Groundwater Resources 2007. And I'd just like to, you know, include, from the comment from the land trust, there were several other studies, and I'd just like to know that those are included as well, that it's not just the Chazen.
Those and others where applicable will be included in this document. We've had conversations with the applicant. They understand that this will be a review of all relevant and applicable studies and reports, and they will document each one of those that were reviewed in the DEIS.
Okay. And who determines which ones are relevant?
Between the applicant and your consultants.
Okay.
Then may I address that? The HHLT comment letter suggested that we wait until the 2019 study by Chazen is complete. We don't want to be held to waiting for that.
Yeah, that wasn't one of the, I?
It was among their suggestions, and I just want to make sure.
Was it in that same comment number, number 30? Or was it in a different comment number?
I don't remember.
The ones I'm referring to are from?
It was in the list of suggested reports that be referenced.
Okay.
As one is not complete and not expected to be complete for a year.
So what I'm referring to is comment number 30. So if we could just check and see which ones are referred to in comment number 30, that would be good. Is that in there?
The comment, there were two comments provided by HHLT that identified reports and studies that could be addressed or reviewed and addressed in the EIS. Comment 30.
Okay, let's have that. And so, yeah, I agree with Glenn.
And comment 42, or 41, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, sorry. So in 5A2A2, which is Anticipated Impacts, Impact on Almer Pond and Clove Creek Due to Siltation, Erosion, Pesticides, Herbicides, Fertilizers, Waste, and Nutrification, Including from Equestrian Center. I'd just like to make sure that in that waste, we're including things like veterinary medicine. Because I understand that a lot of the, it isn't, and maybe it's from feed, because I understand that horse feed apparently contains medication in addition to, you know, having the vet come out. So I'd just like to, you know, we're, if we're going to be concerned about water and groundwater in particular, as well as the surface water, we want to think about, you know, what that is. So if that stuff is included in waste, then otherwise a note might be good. So for 5A2B, under groundwater, I'd just like to add the impact from swimming pools. So I'd like a, that's one of the things we talked about because I know that when people fill their pools, they often start off with water that's trucked in from somewhere else.
You need an item four underneath that?
Yeah, an item four underneath that, yeah. But once you have a pool, you tend to top it up from your well. So if all of these houses are expected to have pools, that's going to be a significant draw.
We'll make that item four under that.
Okay. For 5B1C, similarly, from comment number 41, existing, it's another relevant studies. So if we could just list the studies or make sure that the studies that are in the comment, in the absence of the one that Glenn mentioned, that those are included.
And those, the way we've got, the way we have it prepared here and presented in this scope is that we provide an example of those studies. Again, with conversations with the applicant, and we'll be reviewing this, right? They will include studies that are relevant from the HHLT list, as well as any other studies that look to be relevant based on conversations we have with the applicant and their review, okay?
Okay. Good. So on the B2, Anticipated Impacts, B, it says Describe Impacts on Protected Species, Including from Equestrian Center. And the one before that is Describe Impacts on Forest Fragmentation, Including from Equestrian Center. A lot of people talked about how there was a potential impact from encircling the pond. And I don't know if that fits into these two categories of anticipated impact.
That, we captured impacts on the pond in the surface water portion of the impact analysis. So if we look at anticipated impacts under, let's say, 4, or sorry, 5A2A2, the impacts associated with the entire development program, including the Equestrian Center, will be addressed, impacts to Almer Pond and Clove Creek will be addressed in that line item.
You know, it's under surface water and not endangered species?
The, so that's under surface water. The impacts associated with the proposed development, where it says Describe Impacts on Protected Species, Including from Equestrian Center, that covers all of the development in its entirety.
Okay.
And we added "including from the Equestrian Center" because that came up several times.
Okay.
Well, just when the EIS comes, we'll have to make sure that under 2B2A and B, the potential for impacts on wildlife from the construction of the houses around the pond is at least looked at. I don't know the extent to which that would have any, or could have any impact, but some mention of it should be made.
Well, not just the construction of the houses, but the wall that's going to go around the pond.
Or whatever it is that they ultimately decide to put there.
Well, any construction around the pond, to the extent that it might prevent wildlife from going down to it or otherwise utilizing it. Just, I'm sure that'll be touched on one way or another.
Okay.
And quickly, just an aside, the applicant will take this scope and prepare a draft of the draft EIS, preliminary draft. We will, and you'll have an opportunity too, to go through that document and check each one of these items to make sure that what was intended from the planning board and from the consultants has been addressed as a completeness review. So before there, before this even goes to the public, there'll be internal reviews to make sure that the applicant has addressed all of what is in here and what we understood to be in here.
Right, so I'm just making sure that I understand what's supposed to be in there.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So for Z, C, Zoning and Land Use, 2, Anticipated Impacts, I don't know if it's where an impact on the schools would be appropriate, but I didn't see that mentioned anywhere in here, and I know that there were comments on that.
For, we did see that as well. We can add impacts on schools. Assistant conditions, let me take a quick.
If I can jump in? Certain things were not included because they were not part of the resolution of the planning board as being a potential impact. When you did your determination of significance, you made a list of what were the issues, and that's what guided us in the scope. And any impact on schools was not included. So we're not required to look at anything that has already been dismissed by the planning board.
Steve?
Well, when you made your positive declaration, you were guided by the EAF. And the EAF determined if there was going to be large, or medium, or no impacts to various aspects. I don't remember where we came down on community resources, I believe was where the school district would be, as far as, as far as that goes. So I can't tell you whether that's, something's appropriate to include in the scope or not.
At this point, it's up to the board if they want to see something specific in there, as Steve had mentioned, right? There is, there was a Part II of the EAF prepared for this project. And in that Part II EAF, that impacts associated with that specific item for this project were not deemed to be significant, if I recall correctly. And, and as a result of that, right, the scope reflects those items that were identified by the board and its consultants as being potentially significant. There were items that were addressed previously that had the potential to be significant, that were reviewed and based on input from the applicant and reviewed by the consultants. It was determined that they weren't necessary. Now, we have included in the scope language where the applicant will have to take a look at the potential impacts associated with both, sort of, the proposed development program as a weekend, non-seasonal, non-permanent residence, and then also the more permanent conditions. So as we go through this process, if it looks like there's the potential for there to be additional impacts associated with a particular item that did not come up, we can talk about that later.
Okay.
Just to clarify as well, when we had that discussion, I pointed out that all, when we do the impact analysis, we assume the worst case. So we are assuming a full occupation, year-round occupation. occupation, year-round occupation of the development. And so we're not going to actually be doing a comparison per se of, of weekend use versus year-round use. We're going to assume year-round use. We may make a notation that the impacts are anticipated to be less if, if the units end up only being occupied seasonally, or weekend, or whatever. But we're going to do an analysis based on year-round occupation.
Okay. I'm getting to the end. So under anticipated impacts, we're still in the same section. B, it says document zoning compliance of the proposed project, including sections 175-19 through 175-21. And I just was wondering why -49 isn't in there as well?
The, our read of the code is that section 175-49, and Steve can weigh in on this as well, applies to boarding large animals on a single residence. So a single residential property. The LLUs that are identified require 40,000 square feet if you're going to have, minimum 40,000 square feet, if you're going to have, and the code defines what the LLUs are, what, on your individual residence. And that this is not, these won't be on individual residences. The review that we did indicates that, that, that section does not apply to the equestrian center.
Okay. All right. So 5D, community character 1B, it says identify any aesthetic, I'm sorry, any aesthetic or visual resources on the site and within one quarter mile of the site, including views from Schofield Ridge and Fonsstock State Park. I'm just wondering, in the comments, it said Hudson Highlands State Park rather than Schofield Ridge. I'm just wondering if they're synonymous in this case.
Schofield Ridge is in, is in Hudson Highlands State Park. And I think it does mention Schofield Ridge in one of the comments from HHLT. So I think the intent was that it was from this location in Hudson Highlands State Park, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then, I guess my last question is traffic, where it says traffic is not part of the scope. I'm just wondering why.
As, as we discussed earlier, tra, there was a traffic analysis done previously for this project, and that traffic analysis, which was prepared by the applicant's consultant, and submitted as part of their Part III EAF, was reviewed, and it was determined at that time that there would not be a significant impact associated with traffic, based on the existing proposed program. So that was with a, with a new curb cut on Route 9.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think there'll be more, personally, you know, I just think there'll be more traffic than, you know, based on some of these comments, you know, like all the auxiliary companies that are going to come and service all these properties and service all these horses. I'm not sure that we, that was in the traffic studies. But if, if we are not allowed to address it, then we're not allowed to address it. So that's the end of my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Neil, Tom?
My questions always come back to waste management. Sorry. My questions always come back to waste management. I'm looking to see if we have enough detail. D to A, maintenance roads, utilities, and common open areas, is that going, is that where we find our maintenance of the equestrian center, basically waste removal? And is there any way we can elaborate on that, or ask for more specifics?
Which section are you looking at again, Neil? Sorry.
Okay, we're under 4D to A, maintenance. And this is under the subheading of construction and maintenance.
Are you talking about the equestrian center?
Yes.
Okay, I think under 4C 1C, we already have a, a waste processing plan, I believe, in, in the Part III of the EAF, but I'm sure that'll be incorporated into the EIS. But I would expect that the waste management is going to be included under equestrian center, full description of building configuration, uses and maintenance operations. Now, we've added ownership, staffing, parking, events, and visitors.
Now, where are you, Steve? Where are you?
I'm on page three, under design and layout, which is C, then 1C. I would expect we're going to have what we already have, plus perhaps some elaboration on that.
No, that's, that's fine. I was, the other section seemed like it was lacking in detail, but it's just in another, it's just in another section, that's all.
More than one way you could organize it, but I think
Right.
The way we have it set up, that's where you're going to find the information.
As long as it's there, again, my concerns, as many, many people had, had to do with the math of 40 horses and one 40-yard dumpster. To me, that means a new dumpster every day. So.
Neil, in addition, when we get to anticipated impacts for surface water and groundwater, where we also had, including from equestrian center, that was another place where we were planning on addressing the management of waste. So that's not going to impact surface or groundwater.
That's my only comment.
None of the comments I have have already been expressed, but one thing in response to Mr. Grossi, talking about the homes, whether they become full-time or remain weekend homes, in my memory of this whole project, it's always been that the homes have been presented as weekend homes. And once they're converted to full-time with children and whatever, the impact on water resources and traffic and the rest is going to be significantly increased. I don't expect an answer now, Mr. Grossi, I'm just bringing these points up. The, a real problem with water usage, drove, the drawdown on the water table based, based on 25 individual wells, on a weekend basis, it's about a third or less than if we're full-time with children and so forth in it. I'm just concerned about the drawdown on the water table, not only for the people in this community, but the people surrounding it, and people who build homes, individual homes farther up the hill, up the mountain. And a big question, I haven't seen an answer anywhere. If a dry hydrant is not to be installed, what resources are for fire protection? I mean, if you started to draw down Ulmer Lane, it wouldn't last for maybe 10 minutes.
Just to quickly address the one point, I can give you an answer, it's the same answer I gave already, that when we do our impact assessment, including on water supply, we're going to assume full, full-time, full occupancy. So we're going to assume the worst case.
All right. I've heard that. We'll see. The other big issue is the equestrian center. I want to, my question is, how are we going to limit it? I mean, we talk about HOA, and we talk about maybe 12 people working there, and vehicles coming in and out and everything. And the equestrian center, not just with the horses and the removal of waste, everything associated with it is severe impact on this, this site. And I, I'm just not convinced, among other things, one of the notes I have here, comment number nine, is how will the riders be constrained to keep the horses in the paddock? It's going to be, the whole area will be very tempting to go out and ride through the hills. And I think that's something that hasn't been addressed. I guess that's about it. I mean, it's been expressed by Kim and Neil Zuckerman pretty intently about the three big issues of this whole thing are water, intensity of the homes, the size of the homes, and the equestrian center. So that's my essential points. Anything else?
Well, the board is so inclined, we have made a couple of amendments, or corrections, or we want to call them, to the draft scope. I think you have those, Chris. And if the board's so inclined, you could vote to adopt the draft scope as amended with those changes.
And the clock is still ticking to August 4th, is that correct?
Well, yeah, but I don't think we're going to meet between now and August 4th, so now's the time to act.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I mean.
I mean, unless you're unhappy with the scope, and you want to see wholesale changes.
Well, let's take a, let's have a motion to adopt the scope.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's fine. Yes.
Can you just inform us now what the process is going forward, please?
Sure. The draft scope has been adopted. AKRF will make the changes, probably because they're very thorough, give you a red line and a clean copy, and the applicant the same. And then the applicant will take the draft scope and begin work on a draft environmental impact statement. It'll probably go through one iteration or more. When they have a draft done, and they feel that they're, want to present it to the board, they'll submit it at least to the consultants to take a look at first. They're not required to, they could just submit it to the board, but I expect that's what's going to happen. And we'll take a look at it and see if we feel that it addresses all the items which are to be addressed in the draft scope. And once, you know, and again, they don't have to come to the consultants, but, you know, if they do, once there's some understanding as to, or at least an agreement to disagree as to what's in there, they'll submit it to this board, and you'll take a look at the draft scope. And if you find that everything's been addressed, mind you, you don't have to agree with everything that they put out. They're entitled to present, as long as they cover the topic, their version of it, their opinion on things. And if you find they've addressed everything, then you will adopt the draft scope, or draft scope, the draft environmental impact statement. Once that's approved, we'll move on to a public hearing on it. Public hearing will result in comments. The comments will all have to be addressed by the applicant. And that was, when that's all, all those comments are addressed in a, in a document, it's called a final environmental impact statement, that will be submitted to you, and you'll have to decide if they've addressed all the comments that have been raised, both the boards and the publics. And once you adopt the final environmental impact statement, you'll be in a position to draft a finding statement. And we've discussed what goes into a finding statement before, I'm not going to go over it again. The only other thing I would add, and, you know, Chris can elaborate on it if, if, you know, he feels so inclined, I guess, or if the board wants, just because the applicant submits a study to you, doesn't mean that you have to accept that study. If, and if you have good reason, you wouldn't just do it, you know, you know, on, on, take a flyer on it. But if you have good reason to question what's in a study, you can commission your own study to be included in the EIS, to look into, I don't know, pick something out of thin air, impacts of the equestrian center. If you can find an expert on equestrian centers, you can say, take a look at this study that they've done and give us your, your thoughts on it. Is it correct? Is it incorrect? You know, that sort of thing.
How many of you crash who funds that?
They do. Anyway, that's how it ends up. You wind up with a finding statement, and then you act accordingly off that. Good.
Anybody else? Ron, any comments? Okay, let's move on to the next one on the agenda. We moved around, I moved the public hearing to number three item. James Copeland. Here, here. You hit the other one on the back page. I know, I know. No, you got, you got old eyes here.
So Taylor's at the end of the agenda?
Oh, yeah. No, there's one more at the Garrison Property Holdings.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening. My name's Jamie Copeland. I'm here seeking a change of use for a property at 3052 Route 9. The building was formerly an antique shop. It has approximately 4,000 square feet. Our goal is to add office use to that occupancy. And with it, we're calling for improvements to add a couple of handicap parking spaces that are on grade with the front door, and more clearly define the parking that's been there since it was a store.
Yeah. Go ahead. Want to go ahead and read it?
I will.
Go. Oh.
Just curious. I will. All right. The Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 19th, 2018, starting at 7:30 PM at the old VFW Hall, 34 Campbell Avenue in Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. James Copeland, 3052 Route 9, Cold Spring. The applicant is proposing a change in use of the first floor to retail slash office use, and utilize the second floor for office use. The property is approximately .93 acres, with the building comprising of approximately 4,000 square feet. The property is situated in the HC zoning district in the town of Phillips Town, tax map number 27.16-1-27. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, plat map, and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board at the Phillips Town Town Hall, dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 29th day of June, 2018.
Okay, now, Jamie.
Yeah, now you're up.
That's great, thank you.
Well, you jumped the gun. I, sorry. We're just recovering from the previous.
Everybody hear that? I mean, we're pursuing additional use to add office to retail at that location. We're adding some handicap parking. And we also have some improvements to designated parking barriers. There's a rail that will protect the ramp that goes up to the parking spaces. We're going to be used, using existing light fixtures on the outside of the building, but we understand that the fixtures themselves need to qualify for a dark night qualifications. We have been requested to add some screening from the road, so that it's clearly evident that you're not to drive off of Route 9 to the front door. And we have plans to build a set of steps off the rear of the building to add easier access from the parking into the building. At this time, there are, there are no plans for an addition onto the building. And the site, other than the extended driveway to the handicap parking spaces, is staying virtually the same.
Ron, any comments on the engineering, what we need here?
Yeah, the applicant is here tonight just for the conduct of a public hearing. There's been a prior technical memorandum that was issued, I think, back in January, when the project first appeared before you. I think there's some technical issues that might remain from that. Necessary referrals have been accomplished. And the planning board also made a site inspection, I believe, in May, that might still have some technical issues to resolve. But the goal of tonight was to conduct a public hearing. And I can work directly with the applicant to try to resolve those technical concerns, to make sure they were addressed prior to or as a condition of your approval.
Anybody else in the board have any questions?
So, in the, in the back, past the building, there's, you were proposing parking, but there isn't existing parking there at the moment, right?
Yes.
So that's really close to the creek. It's higher, but it's still close to the creek. And I'm just wondering if there's, you know, if cars are going to be parked there and so, if there's any kind of impervious surface or mitigation or something in case they are dripping fluid, you know, since it's right there.
As I recall, I've had conversations with the town natural resource officer. He indicated that a permit will be required from the conservation board. And we had directed the applicant to deal directly with them. So that, that's going to be an obligation. If the board's so inclined, it could be a condition of any action of yours. But he's going to have to deal with any, any issues relative to Clove Creek and the issue of that parking.
So if, in order to make it a condition of our approval, what does that require? What do we do? We say?
If you're otherwise prepared to move the project forward to an approval, it would be a condition of that approval. Any, any open, outside agencies that are necessary are always identified in your approvals. And they must be obtained before the site plans are signed by the chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public, anyone in the public, comment, questions? No? No? Motion to close the public hearing? All in favor? Aye. Ron, do we, do you think we're ready to declare secret declaration?
Well, if you wish, I can prepare resolutions for the next meeting.
Okay.
Your consideration.
Want to resolution, directing him to prepare secret and approve resolution for next meeting? Conditioned on.
Right.
Right.
Motion to that, Jamie?
Ron, you mentioned several things that need to be on the plans, so I'll get those to you before.
Yeah, I will be reaching for you tomorrow to review exactly what issues are open. And if it requires a meeting, that'll be accomplished.
Okay.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion to direct Ron to prepare a negative declaration.
To move.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to direct Ron to prepare a resolution with the conditions? Ron?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to the second page on our agenda. Garrison Property Holdings, it's another public hearing. I'll read this one. All right, yeah.
There's another hearing.
Yeah. Phillips Town Planning Board for the town of Phillips Town will hold a public hearing to consider the following application. Garrison Property Holdings, Whipper Will Pond Road Garrison. The applicant is seeking site plan approval for construction of a new cottage residence and garage, resurfacing and improving a portion of the driveway, and installation of a septic system. Additionally, three buildings will be demolished, a cottage, a barn, and a garage. The property is approximately 80.81 acres and is situated in the RC zoning district town of Phillips Town. All persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application, plat map, and other related materials will be seen in the office of the planning board at Town Hall. Glenn?
Ron and Watson, from Beatty and Watson, representing the applicant. As the public notice stated, we're dealing with an 80-acre parcel, most of which is covered by a conservation easement. But within the, that is, within the area we're speaking about tonight, we're talking about the northerly portion of the property that is outside the conservation area. I think we provided documentation in that regard to the board at one time in the recent past. Essentially, what you're looking at now is the demolition plan. I've highlighted three buildings that exist today that are being removed. And part of this driveway is going to be disturbed because it's going to be enlarged. The demolition plan include, identifies the three buildings to be removed, the existing parking to be, it's going to be changed, it's not going to be removed. And we've itemized the individual trees that are going to be removed. The project involves taking those things out. And now, we'll pull that off, if it comes off. And we're going to replace those three buildings with two buildings in roughly the same location. Reduction in the total square footage, increase in the impervious surface parking, and that's mainly to accommodate fire truck access to this, this portion of the site. We had to make it large enough for them to be able to turn around. Over here, there's a new septic system being planned. There was a question that Mr. Gaynor raised with regard to, the, the original map that you saw had some steep slopes here because we hadn't weeded out those areas of steep slopes that were too small. We have done that, we submitted that to Mr. Gaynor probably a month ago, and have removed those areas identified as steep slopes. Although they're physically steep, they're still, they're too small to be qualified. Just to, by way of explanation of that, if you had a level field that's, that stepped up at 1.1 foot and you counted that as steep slopes, it would break up the property and cause a, cause a restriction that really isn't necessary. So, the town's steep slopes ordinance requires, qualifies, requires a minimum size for something to qualify as a regulated steep slopes. Those slopes did not qualify. I think we've demonstrated that. Mr. Gaynor can speak to whether that was a satisfactory or not. Again, we're going to replace the two, the three buildings with two, going to enlarge the parking lot, install a new septic system, all within the comp, existing compound area. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if I'm able.
Anything from the board? Ron, any particular comment?
Again, this project is on tonight for the conduct of a public hearing. The board had previously made a site inspection, again, back in May. My recollection that, from the initial review, technical review that was issued by my office, as well as comments raised at the sidewalk, there were still some open technical issues. Nothing extremely significant, but there were, were open issues that have to be resolved technically, that we can work with the applicant's consultant to resolve subsequent to tonight.
Okay.
What about the steep slopes though, Ron? Were you satisfied with that or not?
Again, I don't recall receiving any updated information, but that is something I'll quickly resolve with the applicant.
Anyone, now we'll go to the public. Anyone from the public, any comment on it? Move to close the public hearing?
Aye.
All in favor? Just too fast. Yeah. They're loaded, they're loaded for bear. Ron, direct Ron to prepare a negative declaration.
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to ask Ron to prepare a resolution of approval for next month?
Conditioned on.
Conditioned on.
Ron, being satisfied with the steep slopes? Almost that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more, folks. Don't go away. New business. Taylor Fertiz, is it Fertizy? Is there anyone here?
220 South Highland?
Sir?
Are you 220 South Highland?
220 South Highland, yes.
You're up.
I am?
So my name is Joseph Fertizy. My wife and I own a property at 220 South Highland in Garrison. We own a property at 220 South Highland. It's outlined in red here. It's directly across from the Fish and Game Club. The driveway is, just to orient you. This is the Fish and Game Club here. This is Catfish Pond here. So it's sort of right in between the two. It's a 17-acre parcel. It currently has nothing constructed on it except a driveway. Electric utilities are in place and a well is dug. We propose to build a 4,000-square-foot single-family residence with a 900-square-foot garage, oriented like so. So, this is South Highland Road here, very long driveway coming up to that building site, and the house is right up here at the top on relatively flat land. I'm not sure exactly what kind of information you guys, from me on this, but I'm prepared to answer whatever questions you have.
Anything from you, Ron, you?
Yeah, initially speak. The board has a technical memorandum from my office concerning the project. I've reviewed the initial materials that have been filed. Board may question why the applicant's before the board residential projects up to 3,000 square feet only require a building permit from the building department, since this project is proposed at a footprint greater than that. Site plan approval is required based on the town's use ordinance. So based on that, just looking through it preliminarily, the, the board should initially, initially qualify the project or classify the project. It's, represents a minor project pursuant to the town regulations. So you should initially classify it at tonight's meeting. With respect to secret, a full EAF Part 1 has been filed with the board. We have some technical comments on that, so we're, we are seeking an amended or corrected Part 1 statement for, for the board's review in action. With respect to referrals, there's no mandatory referrals required based on the project's location, but based on a review of constraints mapping that's available, we'd suggest you make a courtesy referral to the conservation board because there's a floodplain for the adjacent brook, and there's also D C wetlands in the area, just so that it's aware, they're aware of the project. And again, as, as often is done, we're suggesting you make a courtesy referral to the Garrison Volunteer Fire Department. So those, those should be done. As I said, with respect to plans, we have various technical issues that we've provided to the applicant. He can provide to his consultant and make sure the maps or the plans get modified.
Mr. Ron, you said classify it as?
Classified as a minor project.
Minor project.
Right. It doesn't hit, it doesn't surpass any of the thresholds given in 17560C.
Ron, I have a question. One here, it's, I'm looking at the right, it says major.
Yeah, it's the, it's the application that they took off the website. I don't know if we provided, if the town provided that to them or not. But in going through the regulations, it's properly classified as a minor.
Yeah? So, I have a couple of questions. I can't find it in here, but the disturbance, so this driveway, is this driveway, sorry, is this driveway built all the way to where the house site is, or is it?
It is, yes.
It is. When was it constructed?
I think the driveway was constructed around 12 years ago. I forget exactly when.
So you don't have to do any excavating for the driveway? You're just going to be?
No, there will have to be some improvements made to the driveway in order to get heavy equipment up there, but there won't have to be any substantial excavation or anything like that.
Okay, because I just, it just seemed like a very small amount of disturbance, considering the size of the house and the length of the driveway, so I'm just?
And further considering that there's a conservation easement on the property, which substantially limits what, where, and how we can build.
Okay. So the second question I have then is, where is the house sited in relation to the ridge lines?
In relation to the ridge line?
To the ridge line, yeah.
This is a topographic map. It might be kind of difficult for you guys to see from that distance. The driveway comes up. Driveway comes up here. As you can see, this is where it gets steep. This is also the property line, right along the ridge line here. So if you were looking at it, oh, this guy is experiencing some, there we go. All right, thank you. So, the, the ridge line is right, is along here, which is the property line, and where we're proposing to build is over here. So, once again, ridge line and house.
Is it below the ridge line? Is it at the ridge line?
It's, it's above. It's, it's the highest point on the property.
Okay, so that's the, that's the point of my question. So what we would want to know is whether that, you know, how that fits into the zoning.
Two, two other things to note that's identified in the technical review. One on the issue of ridge lines, that the, the town mapping that identifies ridge lines indicates that the ridge lines in the area off the property didn't, did not seem to be impacting the development. But as the board's usual protocol, we were recommending that a site visit be conducted to evaluate the issue of access, understand that driveway, which is, you know, reported to be in place, and also understand issues of visibility and that concern.
So, I mean, we are a pretty substantial distance away from the ridge line, but as you can see, the grade does drop toward it. In terms of where the house can be built, we are absolutely limited by the conservation easement. There is one spot on the property where the house can be built. There is no other spot where it can be built, so.
We, we just have to come and look.
Yeah. Oh, I would love to show you around.
And then one last thing, just again, a procedural issue. Seeing as it's a minor project, public hearings are discretionary, so that's another decision to be made, either tonight or after your site visit.
Okay.
Okay.
So I guess the first thing we do is classify this, Ron?
Yep.
Minor. Move to that.
I'll make that.
Class of second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um.
Might want to, courtesy referrals to?
Yeah, okay. Referrals that.
Can we take a second and maybe talk about these courtesy referrals? I'm seeing no on the wetlands, and could maybe just back up for me? Why are we sending this to the conservation board?
Only because when you look at the state D C environmental mapper, the D C administers, it identifies a wetland along the very perimeter of the property. And only for that reason. It, it is not expected to encumber it, but I, I thought it might be appropriate for the board to at least let the conservation board check in.
The wetland primarily has to do with, with the stream here.
Yeah, Phillips Brook runs right along the, the east side of the property.
Yeah, exactly. And this is where?
So there's a floodplain and wetland.
This is where it gets really steep. So the, the building site is, I think, 70 feet above, above grade, above the wetlands.
It's outside the conservation board jurisdiction for wetlands, but not the wetland buffer?
Correct.
Correct. So it's within 100?
No, wait, no, he was talking about floodplain right there, the?
It's 70 feet in elevation. It's more than 100 feet distant.
Right, there's a floodplain along Phillips Brook, which you can understand.
Right.
The, the wetlands that's identified by D C runs immediately adjacent to the driveway as you enter. And as you, as you head north, Stevens Brook just moves off the property line to the east.
Yeah, exactly. So the?
But again, I?
The driveway turns this way and?
Right.
The creek, the stream goes that way, and the trail, the Money Hole Mountain Trail follows the creek along this way.
So, so I don't believe that they have any statutory requirement, but I think it's a board decision, but you might want to?
Usually done as a courtesy when it's that close.
Right, but Steve, where, where are we headed with this procedurally? If everybody, if every applicant has to, for some reason or another, go by the conservation board, whether, what's the rule? On my understanding, it's a 50-foot, 100-foot rule.
Right. They're not, right, they're not required to go to the conservation board. If they were required, we wouldn't have to give them a referral or anything like that. But the practice of the board has been, whenever there are either wetlands on the property, whether they're impacted or not, or if there are impact, significant wetlands like D C regulated wetlands or a stream nearby, where there's at least some potential for impact, whether it's for erosion or whatever other source might be, yeah, then the, this board sends it to the conservation board for informal referral. They take a look at it, send you a report letter back, either say we're concerned or not concerned. Oh, no, no, you're not bound by? Seeking if they want to, if they want to give you some advice on it, you can take the advice or not take the advice, but you're going to be wiser for having at least a theory for having sent it to them.
Yeah, it's exactly the same thing. You asked, you asked for them to provide comments within the period of your next meeting. If they respond, it may be useful to you. If they don't respond, you'll move forward.
The applicant doesn't even have to hear before them if they're not?
No.
Don't want to, they just send it over and they'll give you a comment on it. I mean, unless you want to see?
Okay, motion to?
I'll make the motion to refer it to the conservation board.
And the fire department.
And the fire department.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Site inspection. Now, one thing I was thinking about before we bring this up and vote on it, it looks to me like this, very possibly, the only issue in August, brings up the August meeting. Can we do a site visit or not and wait till September or site visit and forego the August meeting? I don't see anything else on the, on the horizon.
I'm sorry, what are the choices?
A or B?
No meeting.
No meeting and no site visit.
August because of?
So, the Hakeyler application was originally voted to be set up for a public hearing for August, but Mr. Fearing had contacted me and requested that it be tabled until September.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, just, I want to put that out for you before we do anything on the site visit to get your opinion on.
I can't come to the August meeting, so.
All right, anybody else? I'll make it easy. Let's just put this off until September.
Which one?
The site visit and have no August meeting.
What?
Anybody contrary?
I want to set a date in September, not a site visit, or are you just?
How about the first Sunday in September?
That's before Labor Day. That's Labor Day weekend.
The second Sunday in September.
September 9.
September 9, that's perfect.
Okay. 9/9. Move to that point?
I'll make a motion to set a site visit for this property on September 9 at 9:30 in the morning.
Yes.
Will I be in attendance?
Yes, we hope so.
Yes, it's a public meeting.
Are you available that day?
Sorry?
Are you available that day?
I, whatever, without looking at my calendar, I can't say, but yes, I'm available. So will I receive some notification, or should I just mark this down now?
You're getting it now.
Sorry? This is it.
You're getting it now. I need a second for this motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, there will be no August meeting.
In regard to this, you want to declare yourselves lead agency and type it an unlisted action.
So I'll make a motion that we declare ourselves lead agency for secret as an unlisted action.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I just repeat the date and time?
September 9, second Sunday. That's our witching hour for site visits.
We're going to drink coffee and doughnuts.
Yeah.
Die. Sometimes. You're equipped with.
Neil. Motion to, the other Neil, motion to adjourn.
I'll bring the telephone, make my motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you in September, Steve.